Those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. I'm going too fast. Mr. Cameron.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for just the sunshine. Thank you for this community. The people it represents, Lord, I just thank you that how you've just bestowed your favor upon us. I pray you'd guide and direct us tonight as we lead and guide the city and just guide our direction and our future in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much.
Sit down, Gary Allen.
Okay.
We'll wait for everybody to get settled.
Did you get a cookie?
I used to climb on horses. I can't even climb on a stool now.
You got it made. There you go. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I get to start off with something really cool tonight. I'm gonna start with a proclamation. Now normally I read these out there, but I've been told that the microphone doesn't pick me up over there, so I'm gonna read the proclamation here and then we're gonna go out for the photo ops. So, uh, the proclamation, Missouri Good Neighbor Week. Whereas, local and national research show that most Americans think a good neighbor is someone who is quiet and leaves them alone. This is starting out so good. Uh, whereas, the vast majority of Americans do not know the names of their neighbors or engage with them in any meaningful way, and whereas, research shows that knowing your neighbors helps to create neighborhood that is safe, friendly, clean, and reduce crime and increase life expectancy, and whereas, we are created for social connections, and research shows that developing positive neighbor relationships can develop local leaders, aid in community decision-making, improve emergency preparedness, and create more inclusive communities, and whereas, current research shows many Americans suffer from a lack of personal relationships which lead to isolation, depression, and anger, and whereas, developing relationships with our neighbors can help us overcome loneliness, depression, and isolation, and whereas, neighboring is an opportunity to be thankful for those living nearest us, a chance to be a blessing or generous, and an opportunity to also receive, and whereas, good neighbors help to create good neighborhoods and vibrant communities. Whereas, the state of Missouri has officially voted to make September 28th to October 4th Missouri Good Neighbor Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, the mayor of the City of Republic, Missouri, proclaim September 28th to October 4th, 2022, as Good Neighbor Week. I do this to encourage our citizens to participate in the 10,000 Acts of Neighboring Challenge organized across Missouri by the University of Missouri Extension and the Hopeful Neighborhood Project. In testimony thereof, I have Here Under Two, which is a fun word to read, Here Under Two, set my hand and affix this seal to the City of Republic this 20th day of September 2022. And I would like to present this to our good friend, Mr. Burks. Please come forward.
And I have to say, I like you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone just watched. Yeah, look, there you go. Presentation.
Let's pray in our republic. This all got started in republic in 2018.
Really?
And our state representative Bishop Davidson is the one who carried the bill this year for the latest legislature to get it made in Missouri Good Neighbor Week. So, republic has deep ties to this, and that's a good reason to celebrate here.
Do you have any tips? And I know you do. I use a article every week in the newspaper, so do you have anything that you'd like to recommend that we do it to become better neighbors?
It's three easy steps. Learn the names of your neighbors, use the names of your neighbors, and throw a good party once in a while.
And with that, thank you very much, sir.
I do appreciate it.
It's worth a shot, sorry. Thank you, sir. And now, we get to business. I would like to open this up for citizen participation. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to something not on the agenda? And if so, please approach the podium and you will be given three minutes to speak. All right, seeing nothing, citizen participation is closed. We will move on to the consent agenda. Uh, I welcome the city council to ask any questions about items number two or three on our agenda. Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules, we have a planning and zoning meeting October 3rd, 2022, city council on October 4th, 2022, and October 18th, 2022. We're also getting our pictures taken on October 4th, 2022, so be here early and look pretty. Uh, the board of adjustments meeting October 6th is canceled, so please mark your calendars for that. Moving on to old business and tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-51 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight. Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic, Missouri by amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter 105, Elections, Section 105.030, Declaration of Candidacy, Dates for Filing, Section 105.040, Declaration of Candidacy, Notice to Public, and Section 105.060, Notice of Elections.
Thank you, ma'am. You also presented on this last week. Do you have any updates to give the council?
No updates.
Do we have any questions from council about this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-51.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh. Cast your vote. Hit Submit, and we will tally the votes. Bill 22-51 passes. Is that?
Eight.
Okay. Okay. I count six, but I trust you.
Is there a way to zoom out?
Yeah.
I've got eight on my screen, green.
Excellent.
There we go.
Was it that still six? Okay. All right. Bill 22-51 passes eight to zero. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-52 by title only, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter 150, Fraud Prevention and Detection Policy, Section 150.010, Adoption of Policy, Adopting or Revised Policy Entitled City of Republic's Fraud Prevention and Detection Policy.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city? Any questions from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-52.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take our roll call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh. Submit your vote. Hit Submit. Excellent. 22-52 passes eight to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-53 by title only, please.
Motion.
Seven.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter 110, Administration Policies, Article II, Purchasing and Surplus Property Disposal, Section 110.020.01, Purchasing Policy and Procedures, and Adopting or Revised Policy Entitled City of Republic's Purchasing and Disposal Policy.
Thank you, ma'am. My hunch is you have an update.
Yes.
Excellent. What's your update?
Uh, we have made one change to this policy since the last meeting. Um, after some discussion with the council members, um, it did come to our attention and we had some discussions prior to, um, but we have increased, we've added a, an additional provision in there to allow up to $200,000 with the consent of mayor for emergency purchases. That can be found on page nine under Bid Process Exceptions. So this is for the emergency purchasing section. It's just adding in on top of the $100,000 for city administrator and then just $200,000 with the consent of the mayor.
Do we need to do any sort of?
No, uh, Mr. Mayor, it would be, uh, because it's a policy, it's not changing necessarily the ordinance, but it is in the policy that has been changed, so just bringing it to your attention, and the overall approval is adequate.
Do we have any questions from council about the original or the updated policy? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of 22-53.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh. Submit your vote.
And I have eight again.
Excellent. Bill 22-53 passes by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to new business, specifically reading of, first reading of ordinances, this is item number seven on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-54 by title only, please.
Motion.
Seven.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving an application to change the zoning classification of approximately 10.23 acres located at the 904 to 924 block of North Main Street from Zero Lot Line Residential, R1Z, to Trinity Republic Self-Storage Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Karen Haynes, Bill's Director, Republic Missouri Property LLC and Robert Trout, who are the applicants this evening for the plan development district change. Um, the plan development, um, change is to allow for a self-storage facility comprised of 7.37 acres and also a perimeter queuing road for the Republic School System. Uh, this queuing lane, uh, is comprised of 2.86 acres. Uh, the development plan in front of you does contain new water sewer access and stormwater detention for, uh, both particular uses. Uh, for the self-storage facility, it will be comprised of approximately 700 or 650 self-storage units, around 130,000 square feet. Um, so those are the rectangles and boxes that you're seeing on the development plan that are, uh, vertical. It also contains an 800-square-foot office. Um, Lot Two, which is actually the road that you're seeing around, um, three-quarters of the perimeter of the site, is actually the queuing lane for the Republic School System. So you'll see to the south, it's actually tying into the existing queuing facility. Uh, the intent with this is to allow, um, the parents that are dropping off and picking up children at all of those schools to actually get off of Main Street and off of West Highway 174 into a parcel, um, to queue. This will have a tremendous impact on, uh, the backups during, uh, both pickup and drop off. So in particular, uh, the site does contain one residential structure. Um, the entire site is currently zoned R1Z, which is, uh, zero lot line. So this is a zoning change from R1Z to PDD to specifically allow, uh, for the two uses described. Again, that's the storage facility and, uh, the Republic Schools queuing lane. Um, right north of the site, we do have a medium-density, single-family, um, parcel. It does contain one, um, one house, that is the yellow block directly to the north. Um, south is all of the Republic School Systems facilities. Uh, to the east, we have, uh, yellow also, which is the medium-density. That's actually a very large area of floodplain, so there's no actual development in that, um, area. And then to the west, we have Main Street, of course. Um, so we did look at it in accordance with the PDD ordinance. Again, uh, we can serve it with municipal facilities. Uh, the intent of the development plan, again, is to provide for those two very distinct uses, um, that will operate in conjunction with one another. So the actual, um, access from Main Street to the storage facility is on the south end and the queuing lane is on the north end, so they are two separate entrances off of Main Street. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval. We are also recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council. Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor, um, and Karen, I can see it a little bit better now on the blown-up picture, and so the way I'm seeing it and the way you just described it, that the school lane is the one that goes to the top and goes all the way around and then it comes, dumps in on that little piece to the south?
Correct. So the entrance is actually on the very northern parcel line or the top of the property line, and it queues all the way around to the east, to the south, and then back to the west, tying into, um, that existing queuing lane for the schools.
Back into there. And so I think this was answered in the planning and zoning meeting, and so the school will assume ownership of that road and all the liabilities, snow removal.
Correct. And I do want to emphasize, it is not going to be a public street. This is simply just a queuing lane for the Republic School System, but yes, it will be its own parcel with ownership assumed by the school.
Thank you.
Karen, what is R1Z? What was that for?
R1Z is, uh, it's called Zero Lot Line Residential. Um, this is a little bit different than a duplex lot, uh, because the actual property line is like down the center of the structure. So it is essentially a duplex lot, but the property line, instead of being on either side of the structure, it is literally down the middle of the structure.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this the sixth planned, uh, self-storage unit, Republic, that you've brought to us this past year so far?
Uh, since we changed the, um, the zoning ordinance from a explicit permitted use in the general commercial or C2 zoning district to the special use permit, I believe this is going to be number, um, three officially.
But there's three other ones planned.
There are multiple others that we've had conversations. Um, I can tell you exactly. Uh, we recently have approved, uh, we had a small addition, um, to a facility near the wastewater treatment facility that was about a month ago. Um, that was KO Storage of the Ozarks. We had hotspot storage, which was, um, right over here in Frisco Boulevard. Um, that was about three months ago. Um, and then we had one that fell under the previous ordinance that you did not hear. It was, um, it was already zoned correctly off of State Highway MM, um, that is just now finishing up construction. So this will be the third, no, I'm sorry, this will be the fourth. Um, last month you did hear, uh, Jose and Properties, um, on US Highway 60. So this is the fourth under the new policy.
What about the one that's been planned over on Main Street?
Oh, in the corner.
Um, Main Street and US Highway 60, that was a facility, uh, that underwent a zoning change back in like 2018, 2019. Um, we have not talked with that property owner for multiple years. Um, it is my understanding they no longer have the property and, um, I'm not sure of any type of development there, but they have not applied for a special use permit.
So do you, so do you think we might not be getting a little bit oversaturated all of a sudden with all these storage units, uh, locations popping up?
That is a very good question, and if you look at the recommendation from staff, uh, with special use permits, this is at the discretion of the council. Um, so the perfect number of storage facilities for community, uh, community of our size is really an unknown factor. Um, what we can tell you from the inquiries that we have had with people interested in storage facilities is people are not going to typically make a bad investment. Um, these are people that do storage facilities all over the region. Um, it is unlikely that they would choose to pursue a special use permit with the city if they thought the market was already saturated.
Karen, can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
When we have something like this around residential and on a, on a road that is more, more for residential, is there any order, are there any ordinances as far as barriers to create it more aesthetically pleasing to the eye?
Yes. Um, so if you actually look at the development plan here, this does contain all of the standard, um, perimeter landscaping, green space, um, buffering that we would have between, uh, residential and commercial uses. Um, obviously on this particular development plan, because we have the school to the south, which is a party to the application, there's not much. Um, also with the floodplain directly to the east, you actually don't have any residential properties, um, nearby. The only residential property is the house directly to the north.
Have they said anything?
No.
Could you talk a little bit about the benefit of that staging road for the school system?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the impact on 174 and how that plays in and what studies have been done, if any?
Absolutely. Um, so Olson was contracted, um, by the Republic School Systems to do a traffic study to analyze the current traffic situation, and I think as we all know, traffic does get backed up at that particular intersection, both on State Highway 174 and also on Main Street during, um, pickup and drop-off times. Um, what they found through that traffic study and, um, also from our engineers looking at the situation is, um, there's just too many people at one time, um, during those peak times. Um, so it's been a, um, a problem that's been occurring for multiple years. Um, we've been trying to come up with a collective solution between all parties, the City of Republic and the school system, and also MoDOT. Um, this is a great solution. Um, the one that they have implemented, um, for this particular school system for this year is they've staggered the start time, so that helps, that has helped tremendously. But getting the extra cars onto a private parcel that is regulated and owned by the school will be the key, um, to really eliminate those traffic backups. Ultimately, I think we're gonna see, once this is constructed, um, the, the total situation and see if there's any other, um, transportation improvements that might be required in the future. We'll definitely keep an eye on it.
Is there a prediction that this will solve the problem, that this will solve part of the problem, or is it just not enough information to know for sure yet?
I think this solves part of the problem. Um, ultimately, I think it is definitely going to be a conversation that we're going to continue to pursue with MoDOT to see if there is a, a larger-scale transportation improvement, maybe aroundabout or some type of signaling, um, that would better, um, serve this high-traffic area.
Do we have other questions from council? Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor, Karen, what's the average, average traffic volume of a storage facility like this? Is there, is there a high addition of traffic that's going to be there, or is it going to be less?
Truck, uh, the, the transportation numbers for a storage facility are very low. They're actually, uh, a lower traffic count than like, um, a single-family residential house. Um, so the impact of having a separate entrance, um, on Main Street will be very, very low. In fact, the, um, the traffic generated by the storage facility itself is going to be much less than what it was originally zoned for, which was, I think, about 48, uh, R1Z homes.
Mm-hmm. That was kind of my thoughts, too, was just the traffic volume and then just curious on the numbers.
Other questions from council?
I don't know if the rest of council's look, but us, uh, the approval from William Pennell, uh, he states the facts on his, uh, sheet for approval, says he's also concerned with the growing number of self-storage units in the city. So I just wanted to point that out.
Sir.
Andrew Nelson, Deputy City Administrator. I just want to call out that in this case, it's a little bit different than all the, the other mini-storage that you're seeing. We've talked about a special use permit, whereas this is a PDD. So I want to point out that the, the property owner in this case is working with a known problem at the school. They've offered to incorporate, uh, now there, there's compensation, uh, for that incorporation, but they've offered to incorporate a staging lane that's going to help us solve a problem. So what I'd like to point out is there, there's a potential that a property owner here could apply for an application that would not incorporate a, a helpful problem to a solution that we have with traffic there. So that's why it's a little bit different. It's a, it's a PDD because there's two distinct uses. Karen mentioned that, but I want to call attention that they're, they're working as a partner, too.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Anything else you'd like to present, ma'am?
No.
Excellent. I understand that there is Will, and I'm, I always, I get your name wrong every time, so.
Hoy. You could've told me that before I started talking.
All right, fair. Uh, Will, I understand you're here to speak about this issue?
Yes, uh, Will Hoy, 550 St. Louis Street. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the owner, uh, working with Olson. Uh, it, Karen covered it pretty well, but I'd be more than happy to answer any additional questions you might have. Uh, any, any further information?
Any questions for Mr. Hoy? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any other questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, this is 22-55. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of that bill, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving a special use permit for Timberline Land Company LLC, excuse me, to operate a boat vehicle and self-storage facility at the 3,400 block of East US Highway 60.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant, Timberline LLC, has requested the special use permit. This is, uh, for a self-storage facility. Um, this has since been addressed, but it is at 3721 South Farm Road 101. Uh, this is at the intersection of 101 and, uh, US Highway 60. It is directly in front of the, um, 60 West or Fieldstone Apartment Complexes. Uh, the property is comprised of 1.38 acres. It is currently vacant. They have been doing some, um, groundwork, um, there that occurred before the annexation and rezone. Um, the approval of a special use permit at this particular location would allow for the construction of a 55,000-square-foot, um, climate-controlled storage facility on the property. Um, for the special use permit, we did analyze the traffic and municipal, um, ability to serve with utilities. Um, we can serve the facility with, uh, facilities. The sole access to the property will come off of South Farm Road 101, so there will be no direct access to US Highway 60. Uh, we did not require a traffic study, um, for the special use permit as the impact on transportation systems with, uh, storage facilities is very low. Uh, if granted the special use, uh, permit, again, it will allow the applicant to move forward with an application for a new commercial building permit. Uh, this is the footprint, um, for a 55,000-square-foot interior or climate-controlled facility. Uh, it will be a three, uh, three-story facility. Staff does consider the proposed special use permit for a storage facility in the C2 or general commercial zoning district. Uh, to be consistent with the city's special use policies, uh, we can serve it with municipal utilities. It has very low impact on the transportation system. Again, we are pointing out that, um, storage facilities are a special use permit, so they are permitted at the discretion of city council. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from council?
Karen, when people are doing these, are they aware that there's other storage facilities that are coming into the area at the time?
Yes.
Is that concerning them?
Um, well, the applicant is here, so he could definitely address that, but we are very transparent, especially since the shift from C2 into a special use permit. We do track, uh, the number and, um, square footage of storage facilities, so we do have all of that information, uh, readily available that we will definitely share with them.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Please remember, this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting if you do have any questions. Moving on to item number nine, this is 22-56. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-56 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Westbury Gardens Phase One subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. You just won't go away, will you?
Apparently not. Uh, so tonight you have before you, uh, Phase One of the Westbury Gardens final plat. Um, the final plat will legally divide approximately 12.8 acres of land into 31 residential lots. It also includes the dedication of right-of-ways, um, and utility, uh, and stormwater easements. Uh, the final plat includes approximately 3,700 linear feet of street, which is identified in yellow, um, on the plat in front of you, and about 3,800, uh, linear feet of sidewalk. Um, the final plat does conform to the requirements of the development plan, um, dating back to the preliminary plat in 2020. Um, staff has reviewed the final plat, and we do find it in conformance. We are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from Council? Seeing none. Please remember, this is a first read. Please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions. Item number ten on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash fifty-eight, a resolution of the City Council awarding the bid for independent auditing services for a five-year term to KPM CPA's PC. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-two dash R dash fifty-eight, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Megan Cook, Finance Director. It's been about five years since we went out to bid for auditing services. We are required to maintain an auditing service firm to come in and audit our books and ensure that we have good internal controls in place and we're managing our money fiscally responsibly. With that said, we went out to bid in July. We opened it up to multiple auditing firms locally and through the bid processing software, and KPM was the only one to respond because they actually specialize in governmental auditing in the area. So there's very limited firms that can do that. Pricing is in line with what we typically are used to spending, and we are requesting recommended approval for an additional five-year term with them.
Do we have questions from Council on this issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
How long have we used KPM for auditing services?
It's my understanding that it's been about five years.
It's just that that five years, that was our first five years from them?
Yeah, I think we were using someone else before that.
Okay. And my next one's not necessarily a question, but just kind of a statement of how impressive the audit proposal was, reading through that and seeing everything they're gonna do and how they laid it out and are very transparent with that. That was pretty awesome. So I really appreciate the fact they took the time to put that together for us.
Yeah, they're very professional. Thank you.
Other questions from Council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can move it directly to a vote. So all those in favor of twenty-two dash R dash fifty-eight, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes eight to zero. Moving on to item number eleven on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash fifty-nine, a resolution of the City Council adopting a cash handling policy. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-two dash R dash fifty-nine, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please proceed.
Good evening. So we are bringing before you a cash handling policy that we would like to adopt. We do not currently have one in place, but we do have very good internal practices in place to ensure that we have fiscal responsibility over all of our cash. So we are just trying to bring forth something that is a little bit stronger in place and allows to provide guidance and expectations to our cash handlers and their supervisors. So with that, we are requesting adoption.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have questions from Council? Will there be a training on this if this is passed? What's the plan to implement?
Yes. So we are going to actually push it out to all of our ELT members, so all the directors, over each cash handling department. And then we will actually reach out to each cashier individually and make sure that we provide that training with them and go over each of those guidelines.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, as this is a resolution, we can move directly to a vote, which is what I will call on twenty-two dash R dash fifty-nine. All those in favor, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes eight to zero. Moving on to our final item on our agenda, item number twelve, twenty-two dash R dash sixty, a resolution of the City Council adopting an anti-bribery and corruption policy. Seems like a reasonable thing. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-two dash R dash sixty.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Convince us this is a good idea.
All right. So as we were going through trying to secure bond proceed money, we had to go through a lot of questionnaire and prove kind of the policies we have in place. And one of the things that they specifically asked for was an anti-bribery and corruption policy. And although we touched on it in our fraud policy, we wanted to create a standalone policy for this to really enhance giving more direction in regards to bribery, corruption, what that means, defining it for people, the do's, the don'ts, and the laws and regulations that go around that. So we do think it is important to go ahead and create a standalone policy for that, just to enhance that.
Do we have questions from Council on this issue? Appears that you convinced them, so well done. As this is a resolution, we can move immediately to a vote, which is what we will do on twenty-two dash R dash sixty. All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes eight to zero. Mr. Cameron, would you like to give a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Megan, I think you've done a great job with those reports and pulling all the information. So as she stated back in January, February, we did our S and P call, which basically if you're gonna borrow money as a community, you have to go through a ratings call. In that ratings call, we did, I thought we did fantastic. I thought we presented everything. There was a few things that we noted that is great information, but I said, Megan, I said, it's not something we have to do now. But come October, she did it in September, all those policies that they're saying that we might've got dinged on or that we might need to improve. So I commend you that you got them all done back in February. They sit on my desk for thirty days. I'm like, okay, these go in October. But I think you did a fantastic job to get them prepared, at least crafted for us to review and that, just to improve our internal control. So thank you, Megan McCullough. Thank you for getting those prepared for us and just reviewing it so I stay out of trouble. So yes, looking forward to rolling those out to our staff, but also to this Council because we all have to sign that we will comply. David Burton, I want to take this, you know, I know the mayor has recognized you in a proclamation, but staff and I had, Jared, Lisa, and Andrew and I had the opportunity to sit down and visit with you, was it a week ago? After my air and calendaring, but you gave a chance. And I wanna tell you, just as an individual, as a community leader, but also just as a person, I think what you've done in this neighboring program is really, it's really what life is all about. I think that as a believer, to see you connecting people to one another and the work that you've done selfishly, unselfishly, to just to bring that together, you know, he shared, which he would not share upon himself. But there was one time you had a neighborhood meeting where seventy-two people showed up, and they were talking about things going on just in their neighborhood. I can't tell you where we had seventy-two people when I was working on the ballot measure, showed up to hear about those issues that were getting a crowd together. But when you connect with your community and love your community, there's some incredible stories of just people in the neighborhood that maybe don't connect with it. And so I think that, especially in a post-COVID environment, just the work that you're doing, I just commend you because you don't go about it looking for notoriety, but you're very engaged. I mean, the shirts, the hats, the awards you've won that probably do not get recognized like they should at a state level. But I truly believe you're salt and light, David. I think what you do for our community is a true inspiration to do that, to bring our community together, because it's not easy. And we don't trust each other anymore as much, and so we don't wanna know each other as much anymore. And we do everything through a phone. And so I just commend you. And I just appreciate that it drew attention to me that I need to be a better neighbor. And just great job. Thank you for pushing us out of our comfort zone a little bit and a lot. And to the staff, I know we left there going, we gotta do better and do a better job of taking care and at least knowing who our neighbor is. So I commend you for that. I'm kinda chuckling a little bit because the topic of self-storage is on my notes tonight. And so I was kinda like waiting to engage in the conversation. It's not that I'm completely against it, but I made it very clear with staff. We've talked about it. We obviously changed the ordinance several months ago, or at least made it where it came to this council for a vote. And the reason why is because I expressed a concern regarding, and Andrew and I both did, is like, what's the basis for where they're located, how it's located? Now, tonight's situation, when it comes to the one by the school district and even the one out on sixty, the highest and best use for that parcel on sixty and where it's at with sixty, I think it's called sixty west, great-looking building and facility. So there's been no discussion in that nature. But the one with the school district and having the ingress egress to the school, we've been working on that traffic situation for a while to, so to see the partnership between the school district with the developer, also the same thing it was out on sixty west, i.e. east. So, but I do, we are having discussions internally about the volume of self-storage. I made it very clear in two conversations this week that, as Karen stated, that these are subject to your approval. And so basically, you have the discretion. That's what the ordinance changed. So you have the right at any time just to say, listen, it's not acceptable. But I've been very clear in the previous two conversations, just to be transparent that in the future, those that are in commercial areas where the highest and best use is for a different purpose, myself, I, as the administrator, will not be recommending them. And I don't wanna put my staff in the position whether they have to stand up here and give a yes or no. There's just certain areas where we are working to make the best use of our land in our comprehensive plan. And so the one behind the school, it matches it, the one on sixty where that little corner lot was. There are certain areas that we're like, there is a better hire and best use moving forward. And I just will tell you that there's gonna be more discussion regarding that. So I just don't want you to think. But let me back up. I don't believe that you should just create a blanket like the city did in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, saying no more apartments. That was, there's gotta be a basis for why and a formula for why. And so I'm not standing here to say that we have that established or what is a good criteria for what that is. I do think it's something that we need to look at before. I think we could slow those down until we have an answer that would be conducive to that question versus saying, what is a good number? I think that we have to have time to identify what that is before we say, like it was in previous days, apartments are just bad. Apartments are not bad. They're good. They're healthy for the growth and continuing of the community. But there are a lot of these storage units going up. And I wanna know the why and are we getting oversaturated? Because in my mind, it looks like it is, but I wanna know that for based on data, not based upon what I feel or what I see. I wanna see it based on data. So that's some information that we'll be continuing to work on moving forward. But I did not want to interfere in these discussions tonight, and I told them that I wouldn't. But I'm like, we've gotta continuously work. And so.
I gave them a hard time. I was like, what is going on? You're being so quiet.
Well, I'm looking down going, I wanna say something now. But it's not, I don't wanna just get into the topics of the two agenda items that were there. I have nothing against those projects. They don't have anything against the projects in general. It's just what is the highest and best use of the land? And we only get it once. And so what we have to do and what is in the best interest of the community? So I guess if you was to ask the police department and where I, and just in some of the right-alongs and some of the places where our PD have to police these, where there's theft, again, what they generate, what they provide back to the community, be it sales tax, there is a cost. There is certain things that go along with that that we have to police and take care of. And are those the highest and best use for that versus the return that we're getting that's in the community's best interest? And so we have to do a better job of just making sure we understand the why. But I don't think you make a blanket statement that I'm just gonna say we're not gonna do that or issue a moratorium because that's not accurate. So there are certain areas where these are highest and best used. Iron Grain District, for example, has storage units in it. And so you've got multifamily in that development. You've got condos in that, condos, townhomes in that community. So having a consolidated planned development district with storage inside that makes sense because it's consolidated with retail. And so it's those lots that are kinda outliers that are sitting out there by themselves that all of a sudden, storage pops up and it's not necessarily aligned with the overall plan. So we will continue to work on that. Thank you for the discussion tonight regarding wastewater one oh one, indulging, at least not indulging, I guess, listening to that presentation. I will tell the community that tonight, prior to the meeting, we had a work session which we televised that you'll be able to find online with our council meeting, that you can see everything that we discussed. It talks about rates, the future rates increases that'll be taking place. Also, there'll be a meeting on October fourth that talks about the sewer rate increases. But if you wanna see the discussion, why we recorded it and televised it was so there was for information for the community to kinda see the why in the background, that we're not having a special meeting without people being aware that we are having meetings to be as transparent as we can. So I thank the Council for coming out tonight for that. At your seat, there is an OTO handout that talks about the state of the city. OTO stands for Ozark Transportation Organization. So they are the regional transportation organization that distributes funding on behalf of the state and the federal government for the federal highway and transportation. But there is a booklet. Let me see if I can find it. Right here. And I will draw your attention to page, if you don't have to go to it, but the one that takes notice. So basically, they look at these data points, and it's on page five. It talks about the commute times. As you will see, the longest commute times are starting to generate in Republic are twenty-five-point-five minutes. And so what we do at the OTO, what that group does, we are members, we're voting members of that group. They track everything through transportation, through cell phone data of how traffic flows throughout the entire region. And so you can, if you just want some interesting reading about how traffic is moving in and around our region and where the longest commute times are, you will see that Republic's has crept up from, I believe it was twenty-one minutes several years ago, several point four or five, it's jumped up to twenty-five-point-five. So everything we're looking at is how do you reduce commute times? And that's where funding flows, if you didn't know that. So it's all scored based upon commute times. It's not flipping a coin and say which city's in line for the money next. It's actually based on data. So if you'd be interested, I've provided you a copy of that. We will also provide a copy online for our residents if they would like to see this because there is a link that you can go to OTO and see the transportation. And with that, the last part that I wanna say is there is also a legislative breakfast that we do with the Ozark Transportation Organization each year where we invite legislators to come out and talk about the state of infrastructure when it comes to transportation, I forty-four, US sixty, MM, James River, all the transportation in the area. Notice I didn't mention Nix or Ozark. That's just a jab because I love them. They know I do. But it's, there's all over the region. So you are invited. You should be, those, I know Councilmember Franklin, I believe you went. Mayor Russell, I believe you was there last year. It's a great opportunity just to mingle with your legislators. I believe both Senators Holly and Blunt have representatives there as well. And so just to hear the state of transportation at that meeting, I believe the date is October twentieth and RSVP by October seventh. So get with Laura, myself, or Lisa, and we can get you RSVP. But I'll tell you what I love. I love seeing our representatives at these meetings because I think it was at the last meeting, we were the only city that, I believe, that actually had representation at that level. So if you'd like to go hear about it, represent the community. I would greatly appreciate if you would consider your attendance. But with that, Mr. Mayor, it's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Reports from Council.
Actually, I have a question regarding the storage. I would love, and maybe this is the November fourth thing that we get to do, but I would love to sit and have a roundtable with all of the Council and just kinda discuss the future of development, just so we're on the same page. My biggest fear is that we're gonna look back in twenty years and be like, ew, did we just kinda throw things together? So I would love to all kinda get on the same page as far as housing projects go and what we want the city to look like in twenty years.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So a hundred percent, that's what is going to take place, is that we wanna talk about a number of topics long-term as to what is the direction overall, kinda get back together like we did in January of two thousand and twenty and really lay out some of the conversations that we hear, and even the concerns that we as a staff express because we work very hard at planning the future. But there are certain areas that I think get lost in translation that we don't take time like tonight to do wastewater one oh one. We need to do housing one oh one. I think there's terms that get used that need to be corrected and a new terminology so it doesn't sound so difficult because like tonight, you heard, what was the term? RZ one? R-one-Z. We use acronyms everywhere. So it's like a onesie or something, you know, so.
Sounds like you're calling a football play.
So basically, it does, yeah. It's like, but if you wanna know what the, like, a scary zoning is an R-one-Z to me. It means there's no lot line and the houses are stacked on top of it versus high density. I would consider the R-one-Z the high density, and we use high density in the wrong vernacular now. So people are like, it's high density. It's the wrong terminology. So we wanna talk about that. We wanna talk about the charter. We wanna talk about Council one oh one.
So when are we looking at those sorts of meetings?
I believe it's in, it's on your agenda. I believe it was announced.
Is it November fourth?
What is it? November seventeenth.
Okay, so we will get to discuss that. Thank you.
So again, we, one thing about it is that we will also do is send out some ideas of when is the most acceptable time to have this council for, say, a two- or three-hour window versus doing it one-hour increments? It's hard to cover one topic, and we have a lot to cover, but we wanna be respectful of your days and make sure that it's conducive with your work. So getting an idea of when it would be good to talk about that because we still got a budget meeting to have, too, that's not even in addition to that. But we wanna, we definitely wanna get in front of the Council just to have some communication opportunities. Love it.
Yep. Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from Council? Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to touch on last week and this discussion as well with everything we're talking about here. I'd love to have that discussion. Just also, my only request is that we be very mindful of the private property rights of everyone involved as we move forward with this process. But absolutely, it'd be great to have a discussion on this. Cutting back to last week, we had the eighty-eighth Annual Missouri Municipal League Conference. And it's a great opportunity for council members. Anytime you ever get a chance to go one of those, there's plenty of chances to sit through classes, everything from ethics, zoning, elected officials' guide to governmental accounting. It's pretty exciting stuff, but you get to learn a lot. You get to have a lot of different conversations, and there's about four hundred different officials from all across Missouri. So you get a ton of networking opportunities. I've forgotten how many people I met. One conversation that I had in particular was with Stratford City Administrator. I believe her name is Martha Smart and Mayor Ashley Sheets, or Ashley French, I'm sorry.
That's right.
And so it was kind of a highlight of my trip, you know, getting up there. I'm walking down the hall. I see someone from Stratford. Hey, hello. You say hi. She referenced the time she came here to City Council meeting and started coming back to me. And then she, her and the mayor had nothing but positive things to say about. And then she, her and the mayor had nothing but positive things to say about everyone in the city of Republic and especially you, David. I think she was mentioning, she was talking with you later on in the week or something. But it was really great running into her and then hearing, you know, from a third-party perspective of all the things I already know about the city staff and what you're doing, but people relaying that to me, just meeting on random in the hallway. So we sat there for about twenty minutes and had some great conversation. And so I really appreciate having that, you know, that carrier to to make our conversation even go forward. So we had something to talk about. But other than that, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone at the city. Y'all do a terrific job, so I very much appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, so as mayor, I get the last word, and I'm going to say this. I'm kind of an old-school guy when it comes to books and newspapers. I like to read books, I I leadership books, recreational book, I just read a lot of books, but I also subscribe to two different newspapers. One of them is the Republic newspaper. And I read Mr. Burton's article every single week. And the reason I bring this out is I'm actually a newspaper guy. My first real job was at the Lawrence County Record in Malvern, and so like I grew up with newspapers. And the only time I can remember cutting out an article that wasn't about one of my kids or about myself, I'm being honest here, was Mr. Burton's article on leadership. And I cut it out, and I have kept it in my office. It's been two years now. And he's scratching up his eyebrows because he's like he doesn't even remember. Well, it made an impact on me. And it, I never do that sort of stuff, but when I had the opportunity to do the proclamation tonight, I jumped on it because there are people in small communities and large communities around the country that are making a difference. And Mr. Burton is on the top of that list for me because he cares. And coming here and giving him a proclamation is something I'm proud to do. So, sir, thank you for your service, and thank you for the help that you give this community to make it a little bit better. So thank you.
I'm taking the rest of the month off, there's no way to get any better than tonight.
You are welcome.